...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Dennis?
Here.
Ms. Laqua?
Here.
Ms. Minio?
Here.
Ms. Snodden?
Here.
Before we get started, if anyone is here for public comment, there's a sign up sheet on the podium, if you could sign that with your name and your address on there, so when we get to the public comment portion of the meeting, we have that information. So feel free to get up and do that whenever. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the August 12, 2019 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
No, ma'am. Second.
Any questions, revisions, changes to those minutes? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the 8/12/2019 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. This evening, we have a couple of special recognitions, so I will turn it over to Dr. Miller.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'm going to get some help for both of these. First, we want to recognize our vocal ensemble. Thank you all for coming out tonight, taking up a big portion of our room. We have lots of occasion to recognize our student groups in Bexley, and we're really proud of them and all that they do. But our vocal ensemble, under the direction of Ms. Amy Blaser, has been selected to perform at the American Choral Directors Conference in March. They are the only high school from the state of Ohio who was selected to perform at that conference, so congratulations. I'll share, for people who may not know, and the number changes sometimes, but there are approximately 612 school districts in the state of Ohio. So when you consider that some of those districts have multiple high schools and multiple choirs, there are literally probably close to 1,000 choirs who could have potentially gone, and only our Bexley Vocal Ensemble is going. And I'm going to ask Ms. Blaser to share a little bit about their accomplishment and the upcoming trip.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here this evening. So the American Choral Directors Association is a professional organization that showcases choirs of the highest caliber throughout the United States, and it's no way for choral directors such as myself to go and receive professional development, learn from other teachers, get a chance to, I've been honored to be able to present there. The singers vocal ensemble has performed at a regional conference for ECBA two times prior, in 2012 and 2016. This one's a slightly kind of higher level. They have, every other year, they have a national conference, and then they have regional conferences, and there are several regions throughout the United States. This year, we are combining with North Central, so it's 10 states in the U.S. that are going to be combining and performing, or and having choirs perform in Milwaukee. Only 17 choirs were selected from those 10 states, and actually, they're not only the only high school choir, they are the only choir, including collegiate, including from Ohio. They represent completely Ohio. So it's pretty awesome. There are only five high school choirs out of those 10 states that were selected at all. So, and senior high school and mixed choirs are pretty competitive in this, as would be collegiate as well. So it's a really big deal that they were selected to do this. They will travel to Milwaukee on the, I normally have these dates on the 5th, I believe, so they'll get up there, and then they will be a part of a performance Friday morning, where they will have their own 30 minutes to showcase themselves and do a program, and again, for 10 states worth of choral conductors. And so it's really, really quite an honor. They will be, I believe they will have a recording, so I can bring it back and you can hear it. And then the rest of the day, they will get to hear some of those other choirs that were selected, so that they can get a chance to see who else, one of the other 17 as well. But yeah, it's, we're really, thank you for supporting them and showing that you, the district and the board and the administration supports so much the co-conduct activities that we have here in Bexley, and just really proud of them. So what they, I'm sorry, I didn't say this part. They, I submitted recordings of them. You have to submit recordings from the last three years, one from 2019, one from the 17, 18 year, one from the, what is this, 16, 17 year. Is that right? Did I spell that right? So the last three years, to show that they have had quality for the past three years consistently. And then based on that, they were selected. And so yeah, so we found out right before we started, and we're very excited. So thank you.
And I will say, I am going to recommend that they're allowed to miss two days of school to go to this conference. So cross your fingers, guys, you know, that they're going to say yes, no. It'll be great. It'll be great. So congratulations once again. So glad that you could be here. Our second recognition tonight, I'm just going to start, every year, I have a theme for the school year, and this year's theme was "Leading From Every Seat." And this staff member literally led from her seat in August. Ms. Jennifer Silva. I was hoping she'd be here, but I'm going to, I'm going to invite Mr. Eichenberry to come to the podium and help explain. At the Miltech cabinet plant, which is right next to Centab, where we store our buses and a lot of our supplies, there was a pretty significant fire on, I believe it was Friday, August 16. Nothing you want less than to get a text message on Friday evening saying there's a fire right next to our school buses. And so Ms. Silva had, was on her way in, and took some action to, to protect our school buses, and I'm going to, and our property, so I'm going to let Mr. Eichenberry explain that.
So, that evening of August 16, Jennifer Silva embodied learning, leading from every seat, and engaged with power. Collectively, we're so thankful and appreciative, although some Bexley resident students may not have been, but on that Friday night, she was turning the bus garage, she saw a few, and quickly realized that Miltech was on fire. And to help, to understand the way that compound works over there, the buses were all in a row, facing forward to the side of the Miltech building. So immediately, it's a cabinet, making company, chemicals, wood. It was dire from the, from the get-go. So she just quickly moved, started moving buses. She didn't even think about her own BMW that was sitting there, which I might look at, but she didn't. She moved the buses until the firefighters told her to get out, which they were pretty forceful in telling her to get out, because she was moving the bus, it's definitely her mission. So collectively, the next day, we didn't miss any field trips. And then Monday morning, other than switching some bus seats around, some child seats around, excuse me, Monday morning went off about itch, because I just wanted to express congratulations to her for saving, collectively, my bacon and making life much easier for the district. I had lots of balls that evening, offering support as they saw it on the news. And luckily, it was only one bus that didn't get out. It got out later, with just a little bit of a meltdown, so it was okay. So I just wanted to, to give her some opportunity to thank her.
And I want to thank Mr. Eichenberry for keeping Dr. Williams and I informed. He actually went over to Centab that evening and spent his evening there, making sure that things were being taken care of for us. And I also want to recognize Mr. Art Banks, who made sure that there was a plan in place to transport all of our athletic teams the next morning. So from a student perspective, and we're a student-centered culture here, there was no disruption of services whatsoever because of the work of our staff members, and especially Ms. Silva. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If our students would like to go, we would certainly understand that you may have some other things to do this evening. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
Go practice.
I'd love that. Thank you so much, Dr. Miller, for bringing both people, both groups in. We are now moving on to executive reports. And again, Dr. Miller.
Okay. So one item that's not on the agenda that I would like to mention is the launch of our Bexley Be Well initiative last Wednesday, September 4. We had about 150 attendees at our launch event last week. And again, as a reminder, this is our really community-wide initiative to focus on the mental wellness of our students. It is a, as I said, a collaboration among many in our city, as well as many in our school district. Our launch event included a screening of the film Angst, which is about anxiety, as well as followed by a panel of experts. We had Dr. Kitty Saldano, formerly with OSU Clinical, she was the Clinical Director of Outpatient Behavioral Health Services, and is now a consultant with Nationwide Children's Hospital. Dr. Jim McDonald, a Bexley, our Bexley Team Doctor, and Nationwide Children's Hospital Sports Medicine Doctor, and a professor at OSU School of Medicine, and a parent of Bexley students. Cam Timon, who's the Clinical Coordinator of School-Based Services and Community Partnerships at Nationwide Children's Hospital. And Matt Dunnechek, who's a licensed professional and clinical counselor with the Gestalt Columbus office. We had an outstanding evening, questions and answers, and just really great conversations. More people have been reaching out to me to become involved with this initiative, which I think is great. As a reminder, on September 22, we have our first Parent Institute of the Year, and looking at our Chief Academic Officer, and we have a number of sessions that would be related to mental health, as well as a number of others topics important to parents. And then also, we're inviting people to read the book, What Made Maddie Run. Each of the board members, you all have a copy. I'd like to thank our Bexley Education Foundation, who purchased this book for every single staff member in Bexley City Schools, bus drivers, secretaries, aides, every single staff member received a copy of the book. And the author, Kate Fagan, will be here on October 6. So thank you for your support of this initiative. Thank you for your commitment to keeping our students and their wellness at the top of our priorities. So we appreciate that. Couple items on the agenda I wanted to mention. We, after a long summer of searching, we have found a Spanish teacher for Maryland Elementary School. Kristy Pinch, Pinchinet is here. She's a halftime teacher up at Maryland. She was formerly a long-term sub in Worthington, and prior to that, she was living in Texas and teaching Spanish. So I know Mrs. Drake is very happy to have her, because she did teach Spanish for a couple of days, and she said she doesn't speak Spanish, so that was a challenge, but that's what our principals do. So great to have you see here on the agenda. Unfortunately, we also have had a teacher who has had to resign, Tiffany Meyer, Middle School English Language Arts, and High School English Language Teaching English Learners, had to resign suddenly for family reasons. Fortunately, we believe we have already found someone to step in and fulfill that role for the rest of the year. Also sadly, Terri Grace, who is our nurse up at Maryland, has resigned to take another position. And the only other item of note is that we do have one updated policy, IJA, which is Career Advising. It's a very minor change. You've all heard about this a couple of times, but we're changing the word "reviewed" to "updated" to be in compliance with Ohio Revised Code. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
So any treasure finance section of the agenda, you'll see two treasure report, or two attachments to the treasure report. Talk about the second one first. The June 2019 financials corrected, as in my email to you a few weeks ago. When I was closing the books with my assistant treasurer, we, in June, and June is a big month because of the fiscal year end, and you do some things different. So it does take some time. And so she and I were doing a tag team effort to close the books, and we had two spreadsheets going, and when, so we closed the books, everything came out fine. And then I printed her, her copy, and, which was not the right copy. So in summary, the June financials need to be corrected, and it's just on the bank, bank reconciliation sheet. Not a big deal. The most important sheet, the one I always talk about, is page one. That didn't change. It's just the reconciliation, the bank statement that changed. So now I will talk about the August financials. The big thing that I have to note that's outstanding this month is the line 1.05, Property Tax Allocation Line. You can see, we did not receive any revenue in August, or up to August. That's a timing with the state. As of Friday, when I told you about this via email, we didn't know when we were going to get that money. We got it in August last year. Just today, I can see that we're going to get it tomorrow coming from the state. So it's just a timing issue. They've paid it, they vary in months over the years. I look back, they paid it in October, September, August. But I think this is maybe a good point to say is, if you have cash on hand, to be, to need 1.4 million dollars, would be, we'd be in trouble if we needed that money right away. And some districts need that money right away. I've been in a district that counted on this payment from the state. But we're in a position that we have enough cash balance to be able to withstand these timings from the state. But good news is, we're getting it this week.
I have a question. Do you anticipate it to be this, about that amount? I mean, it's a fairly accurate amount.
Yeah, the amount is accurate. It's, it's actually a little bit more than what it's supposed to be. So that's, that's possible. The two variants is above it in property and income tax. I'll just mention that the income tax is a little bit of a carryover from smaller payments that we believe we should have gotten earlier. Property tax, I think, is right on, about 1% difference. I'll just remind you that Capital Property, that was formerly Trinity Lutheran, is on the tax rules as of right now. That would probably be exempt. So that's a big difference in this right here. That's where most of that $100,000 actually is coming from, I believe. In the expenditure side, I think it's still, it's still timing. When you have, when you forecast for 12 months in categories like capital and expenditure, it's timing. Usually, I just smooth out the entire expenditure over every month. And we had a lot of purchase orders at the end of last year that came due this month. That happens from year to year. I think that happened two years ago as well. So this is based on the April 2019 forecast. So it's based on information, this month-by-month projection is based on information in April. So in April, we didn't know that we would have a lot of purchase orders outstanding for supplies, and that is, that can fruition in payment in this August, July, and August. Any questions on the monthly financials? The 2000 fiscal year, 2020 fiscal year appropriations is 7B, and this is just our spending authority for the year. This is our permanent appropriations. We're required to file this with the Franklin County Auditor by the end of this month. And while it may look like general fund budget is 43 million roughly, that's just spending authority. It's not what we're willing to spend, but 40. So think of it almost like a credit card, where you have a $5,000 limit on the, on the month, you're not going to spend $5,000 in a month. You might spend $4,000. But it's just authority to spend.
So Mr. Smith, I have a question. The Financial Summer Report, it's like the, I don't know, it's the last couple pages of the financials for August. There was an item that I had a question about. It was the BEF grant through the fiscal year 19.
Yeah.
Okay. Back on the.
Yeah, so.
It's the one that looks like the dot. It's the one that looks like the dot matrix paper.
Dot matrix. It's our 1980s accounting system now. So the BEF grant, you said 19?
Yeah.
Yes, negative, is that your?
Yeah, that's, yes. What can you tell us about that?
Yeah, so we have a relationship with our education foundation, and I kind of have an agreement with Pam Glasgow, that we will, on projects that they have, that we don't necessarily know the expense yet, we will pay for it. So we get the right, right expense, and then she'll write us a check.
Okay.
Instead of her saying, well, we think it's going to be this amount, and it's an estimated amount. And this is closely related to our technology purchases.
Okay.
So instead of her writing us too much, and us sending a check back, we have such a great relationship with them, that I wait till the invoice comes, and this is just a matter of us timing or reconciling all these payments.
Okay, thanks for explaining.
We still have some expenditures coming from them too, so that's why I just will wait till the end. So this usually clears up with them.
Thank you.
I have a question about the appropriation.
Yes.
Are there any significant, either increases or decreases from FY19?
Yes. Great question. There is a big difference, and, scroll to that, and it's on page two of that appropriation measure document. And it's, you'll see numbers, like three-digit numbers, like 001, that's a general fund. If you go down to 026 Employee Benefits Agency, we approved a new fund in May of this year, and it's essentially just a fund that we funnel our insurance payments through because of timing. We have to have a fund to collect that, and then we make a payment later. At the end of the day, it really, the balance should be zero, very close to zero. But because of the timing, the changing in timing of payments that we had to make through our insurance. I could not advance anything money, so I had to create this new fund to hold them.
That was not really an increase in spending.
No, it's not an increase in spending. It's a, yeah. It's essentially double, it's essentially double counting. It's expensed in the 001 fund primarily, it's received in that 026 fund, and then it's expensed again in 026. It's.
I'll trust you on that.
Sorry, I forgot about that.
But in the other categories, nothing significant?
Nothing significant, no. Within the last two years, the funds in 401 auxiliary services, that's lower than typical, but that's because the state changed how they fund auxiliary schools, which is in Bexley, St. Charles, and CSG. CSG is not affiliated with any religious associations, so they can receive their money directly from the state. And we still have money from the state for St. Charles. So that's a decrease from the last couple of years, but everything else is not going to change from last year. General fund obviously did increase a little bit, because that's our biggest one, but expenses do increase there. Any other questions? That's all I have. Thank you.
We do not have any other executive reports this month. We'll move to board reports. I don't have any specific reports, other than the Athletic Board. First meeting is on Tuesday, September 17, so a week from tomorrow. Is that correct, Dr. Williams? Which I will be on. But I, and I don't have any other reports, but I also wanted to commend Dr. Miller and everyone that put on the Bexley Be Well. I was there, and it was for the, for the opening, and everyone that participated. It was such a good turnout, and we got good press. Channel 6 and Channel 10 did interviews, and I think, and Angela Ann from Channel 10 was the moderator, so. But I heard nothing but good things, so I wanted to make sure I commend Dr. Miller on behalf of the entire board. Other than that, oh, and I also wanted to welcome Ms. Howson. And I will be coming to you for your first, first ever board report, but welcome.
Thank you.
To our board. Thank you. Ms. Noden?
So BEF starts, their first meeting is in a few weeks in September, so I'll report back on that. And they've also started their YPP program, which the students have their first meeting this week. I'm looking forward to that. And that's all I have to report on BEF. I'll have more next month.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dennison?
I was able to attend the Record Board meeting this month, but very busy. I just finished the Lively Block Party, which was great, before it started raining. And then Smush, Flash, and Dash was a tremendous success as well. We're also, the Record's currently reviewing the architectural plans for Jeff Manchin's, that property is well underway. It's a little over budget, so we're working on value engineering some things to get it back into the budget. But it's really exciting to see that coming in person, and to look forward to that facility, getting all those spaces, both for rental and venue space, but really actually, more importantly, all of the programming space, the space for the preschool there will be, I think, transitioned to.
Can I have to speak up?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay. I don't have that much to report. Other than, plans for the expansions of Jeff Manchin are well underway, and I really can agree. I guess the only other event I went to was the Kazan Togi last week, which was a lot of fun. Tons and tons of families out, lots of food trucks. It was great to see all the kids out playing, and sort of directly going over to the football game as well, so it was good.
Thank you. Ms. Laqua?
Again, I don't, we don't have a report yet from the Athletic Board, but I did want to also give a very special thank you to Dr. Miller and Lysan Smith also, for their, the launch of the Bexley Be Well program. It was a terrific start to a very worthwhile initiative that Bexley is leading the community in. The community is obviously participating in this, but I feel that our district has taken on a very big leadership role in this whole program. I think that we made a statement about our commitment to our students' mental health and wellness. And I think it's been felt around the community. I was in attendance, and many of the, the questions that were asked by the audience were wonderful. They were engaged, they were, it was almost like everybody was hanging on every word that was being said. The movie moved all of us to tears, almost. And the main thing about the movie, I felt that, I think a lot of us saw people that we knew in the movie, whether they were relatives, or friends, children, or whatever. But in the end, there was such hope, that these, a lot of these children had received help and support from their communities and their schools, and they had such hope for their futures. And I thought that was the power of that movie. Not only seeing people in it that needed help, but also the power of supporting mental health and wellness, and how incredibly integral that is for the future of our students. And I commend our district, the, like Mr. Barnes said, the TV stations have said this, that we are in the forefront of this. Even Dr. McDonald from Children's Hospital acknowledged that Bexley is taking a big step forward in committing ourselves to this initiative. And we're determined to make a difference. And so I think it's, and Lysan was, you know, it was so wonderful to see our administrative staff up there and clearly stating our purpose. It wasn't just words. There was such emotion in the room, and I, it almost brings me to tears, because I feel that this is the job we're meant to do. This is why we're here, is to make a difference in our children. And student-centered learning was at the forefront. We were bold, and, you know, I was so proud of our school district for that evening. So thank you very much. Also, another major event that happened last week was the State Superintendent for Ohio was here. Dr. Di Maria visited Maryland Elementary School, Little Old Maryland up there. And it was such a proud moment. We've had so many proud moments recently. Such a proud moment for our schools. The State Superintendent was there, Dr. Miller was there, Ms. Abraham was there, the principal was there, I was there, and these three fifth grade students kind of went, step aside, this is our school, and we're going to show you our school. They truly exemplified everything that we would want our students to be. They were confident, they were excited about learning, and the State Superintendent, I think, was clearly moved by watching our students take charge. And you could tell that they loved their school, they loved their fellow students, they loved their teachers. I mean, it was evident in, in everything they said. And I was, it was very, I was very proud of them, and I was blown away by their ability. And so anyway, those are two very proud moments that, and of course, the school can't take all the credit for these students. I think their parents are very much responsible for a lot of who these children are, but I think that, you know, forging a team, for them to be able to do this on their own was amazing. And great for us, I think. Anyway, sorry about all that.
It's okay. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was wonderful.
Ms. Minio, you get to follow that up.
It's going to be much more brief than that. There's something to report from the Policy Committee. We did not meet this last, this last month, but we will be on schedule again in October. That's next month, right? October, October. Like, what month is it? October. And really, the only thing I want to, I think, add, I did think that the Bexley Be Well was amazing. Thank you, everyone who was involved in it. But I think when you were there, and you looked around the audience, it wasn't just parents. And I think that says really a lot to the fact that this is like a truly, like a community. Like, I appreciate the leadership that the district has put forth of that, and bringing everybody together. But when you see people who are grandparents, or don't have children, anywhere near. But when you see people who are grandparents or don't have children anywhere near our schools but live in our community showing up, I think that really says, speaks to the community piece of it. So, I thought it was wonderful too. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Hausen, your first report.
So, I'm Dr. Hausen. I just want to do a quick little intro. I'm a cheerleader, I'm captain of the cheerleading squad. I love student council, so I'm president there, and that's why I'm here. And so, I think the thing that I really want to talk about the most is the Bexley Be Well program. I just want to say that it's a very good idea. I know people who suffer from mental health disorders, and it's really important for high school students to know that they have people there for them, and that they have teachers who will support them and be there when they are at their toughest time, when they're at their highest time, people that are supporting them, people that are encouraging them. So, I think it's a really good step in the right direction, and I think mental health is starting to become a really, really big issue, especially with our generation, with phones and social media, it's like a really big issue. Anxiety is at its highest. So, I think that it's really important that schools are doing something about it. So, I wanted to call you all for doing something about it because it truly speaks, means the world to me, and I'm sure it means the world to a lot of other students. And then, just on my end, homecoming, we're planning for that. We're looking at Valleydale. I actually was homecoming chair last year, so I planned homecoming for my, for last year. We had record-breaking attendance at Valleydale. So, a lot of people liked it. So, we want to go back there. Really safe, they actually require police officers, so it's like a really, really safe place. I love it. We're probably going to go back there. Oh, we're doing a new thing this year with student council. We're doing policy meetings. So, we're dedicating one Friday, every single lunch period, like every single Friday, we have a meeting, but one Friday out of those Fridays, we're going to have just policies. So, we're going to talk about, there's a lot of changes this year that a lot of students are passionate about, they want to get their word out there. So, we're trying to make sure that a lot of people are heard. That's one of my big things as president, I want to make sure that it's not just student council making the decisions, it's everyone. So, we're going to try and make that more open, not as much as just the club, but anyone can come and talk about that specific policy that month. So, that's a new thing that me and Mr. Featherstone, my advisor, have implemented this year that we think is going to go really well, and we think that it will make sure that a lot of voices are heard, and they would have to come to like, they wouldn't have to come to every single meeting, they can just come to the policy ones. So, that's everything on my end, I think. Thank you so much for having me, Bella.
Excellent first report. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to public comment.
Can I ask Dr. Miller just one question off the bat?
Sure.
Do you know, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Abraham, do you know when we will have like agendas for the Parent Institute, please?
Parent Institute?
So, actually, in sending newsletters, of course, catalog went out with the registration link.
Oh, did? Okay.
Yeah, so you want to check back in your email, it's in there, I guess, move out. Your newsletter goes out this week.
Mine is...
It's going to be coming to you for a couple of...
My newsletter goes out on Thursday. I'm looking at Mr. Trill. We will include, we'll include that link as well on Thursday. On that, please encourage people who maybe don't have children in school to sign up to get our newsletters. That's, that's, we don't have access to emails of people if they don't have children in school. So, the more that you're talking with folks who may not have kids in school, let them know, that's still a great way to stay connected. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, is there anyone signed up?
No one's signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to have public comment? Okay. We're going to move on to item 6 on our agenda, which is the Personnel Consent Agenda. We have items 6A through F. Do I have a motion to approve 6A through F?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, issues with anything in 6A through F? Okay, great. I think, I think Dr. Miller covered most of the highlights. With that said, since this is Personnel, Mr. Smith, could you call the roll for approval, for the vote on approval of 6A through F?
Ms. Snowden?
Yes.
Ms. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. LaQua?
Yes.
Mr. Barn?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number 7 on our agenda, which is the Business Consent Agenda. We have item 7A through D. Do I have a motion to approve 7A through D?
Second.
Sorry.
Any discussion, questions, issues with 7A through D?
One thing I forgot to mention is that I want to thank Mr. Smith for making his video debut on offering facts for the levy coming out on Facebook page. And so, he has become a star of the financial world in a new way. And so, I wanted to make sure people want facts about the levy, and you can hear from the source. Don't hear from social media, don't listen to rumors. Please listen to the source of the information, the man who listens to the state law and the state auditors. These are not facts created by the school district or manipulated by the school district. These are facts mandated by the state, and they are audited by the state. So, they are facts. So, I thank you for doing that because I love hearing it from the source, so.
And that would kind of bring it back to under the Treasurers Report you're talking about. Information is always available on our agendas on the Treasurers Report, which shows the financial information that Mr. Smith talks about in his report, but all the numbers are there, and the information is there, not only on item 7A, but also on 7B, our fiscal year appropriations. So, that's always good information to kind of come back, especially if people in the public are looking for information about our financial situation. So, with that said, any other comments for 7A through D? No? With that said, all those in favor of approving 7A through D, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item number 8 on our agenda, which is Resolutions. We have items 8A and B. Do I have a motion to approve 8A through, 8A and B?
Second.
Any questions, comments on items 8A and B? Hearing none? Those in favor of, those in favor of items 8A and B, say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Thank you. We have no executive session this evening, but we do have other items that may properly come before the board. We do have, just so the public is aware, there's a Records Commission meeting, which is myself and Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith. It's a, it's a meeting that, Mr. Smith, you can refresh me what that is.
Yeah, so, we have a records retention schedule, and we're required to have one meeting per year. And so, we meet and discuss what items we can destroy off that records schedule. And so, it's primarily financial documents that are about 10 years old. So, yeah, we'll be discussing that list and approving the list for...
Good.
It's the fastest meeting you'll ever see.
Do you destroy just the paper copy, and you're required to keep a digital copy? Or do you destroy all of it?
Something that's 10 years old, we probably don't have a digital copy of.
Oh.
And there's certain renders that are kept, like financial statements are kept, some of the aggregate reports are, but like purchase orders or invoice vouchers. But as we progress, or as the years progress, our digital copies will still get around. So, that's one nice thing about what digital is, you don't have to destroy it if you don't want to.
Great. That is just informational. And the only other thing is, our next meeting is not the second Tuesday, it is the third Tuesday of October, which, the second Tues, or Tuesday, Monday.
21st. It's the 21st.
The 20, it's on the 21st, October 21st, which is a Monday, not a Tuesday. Monday, October 14th is Columbus Day, and also the day of the...
Taste of Bexley.
Taste of Bexley. It's Monday, too.[1782.41]